So we will open our public hearing tonight on our tentative budget for 2025, 2026. Is there anyone that would like to speak? All right.
Do you want me to come up?
Yes, I'd like you to come up here, state your name, and state your address. And you have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, everybody, and thank you. My name is Paul Frickman, live at 103 Riverside Drive. I talked to the gentleman who was just here about the unassigned fund balance and kind of understanding of what his purpose was, kind of one of my big questions. The other one is, on Steel's Point where I am, is whether or not in the budget for next year, there's any capital for repaving that road, because that road is getting beat up pretty bad. And I was just curious whether or not that is in the works for next year or not, because I know Terry, when I talked to a village, a road guy, and he said that they're planning on doing a road project, but he wasn't sure where it was. So I was just curious, because that road out there is in pretty bad shape. So that's the only concern I have. I went through the budget, and the budget looked really good.
I could answer that for you. We use our CHIPS money, which is consolidated highway monies that we get from New York State, and that we, so we have a fund for that, as you've seen on the budget.
Yeah.
That's completely up to Terry.
Okay.
That's a Terry situation, not a budget situation, because he would use his CHIPS money, and if he decides this is a good year to use it, fine. But if he says, no, we're not going to do it this year, we'll do it next year.
So would I talk to him personally, then, on what his plans are for the next year?
Yeah, we let him make those decisions as to what road gets paved when.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anyone else have any questions or comments? We'll just sit here and look at each other for a few minutes. Since there doesn't seem to be any other interest and questions, we'll close the public hearing with a tentative budget 2025, 2026. We will now be doing the local law for tax cap. Joanne, do you want to go through that?
It is the attempt of this local law to allow the village and claim to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commence in June 1st, 2025, that requires a real property tax levy and excess of the tax levy limit, as defined by General Municipal Law 3C. Authority, this local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision by the General Municipal Law 3C, which expressly authorizes a local government's governing body to override the property tax for the coming fiscal year by adoption of the local approved by a vote of 60% of said governing body. The Board of Trustees of the Village of Clayton is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year commencing June 25, that requires a real property tax levy and excess of the amount otherwise prescribed by General Municipal Law. If the court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation or circumstances invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, compare, or invalidate the majority of this local law, but shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or in its application to the person, integrated, firm, or corporation or circumstance directly involved in the conspiracy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. This local law should take effect immediately upon violating the Secretary of State. And this also is just something that we do every year, just in case we need it, but we've never had to use it, and we will rescind it if it's not used.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or we're going?
No.
Okay, just do it. All right, all set, thank you. Our first visitor is Parker Schlerm. If you would come forward. Parker has, also known as PJ, has expressed an interest in being on the ZBA board. So I just wanted you to come and introduce yourself and tell us a little bit as to why you'd like to be on the board.
I was just going to say I'm PJ. I was approached by a couple other people, friends of mine, to do planning or zoning to maybe get some younger people involved in the community. I do have a small excavation business. I do see a lot of the zoning issues and policies and procedures and permits and all the stuff, I get it. And I'm just, I want to see, play and grow the right way, by the rules.
Thank you.
Where do you live, Parker?
Part of Cary.
Anyone have any questions for him? So would anyone like to make a motion to accept him for the ZBA board?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Me. I have a problem with nothing against you, it's just local contractors seem to have conflicts of interest on projects, and I'd like to avoid that. Just my opinion.
Well, it's been passed. Your set.
Thank you.
There will be, there is a meeting next Monday. They meet the third Monday of every month, and I will forward your, do we have your phone number?
Timmy, they have everything down at the town office.
All right. We'll get your phone number and let the ZBA chairman know. He knows, and then?
Yeah, there was a letter without my information.
The town sent out a letter. They kind of, the secretary of town already sent you a letter, right?
No.
Oh, they haven't, okay.
Timmy said she was waiting, they were waiting till like?
Yeah, they, yeah, they would wait, they would wait for that, for us, yeah.
And then you'll just have to come up inside the old book.
Yep.
Okay, super. Thanks for being on the board. Jordan? I'd like to introduce Jordan Kaufman. She is our town and village historian.
Hi, how are you?
And she wanted to come and explain a little bit what she does and why she would like to have a few more hours added to her work schedule.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
My name is Jordan. Nice to meet everyone. I am loving the new job and everything that's coming with it. I found a couple challenges on timing and getting all my responsibilities done, and then some extra things I would like to do. So currently, I have a couple programs, I have some over history, history, I'm doing Facebook, which I also research and respond to all inquiries in person and on email, and we actually do get quite a few of those. And just to get those job duties done is very hard in the, a lot of time that I have. And some projects that I'm working on, I've reached out to the elementary schools, I'd really like to get a local history in our curriculum. The historic signs need to be taken down and repainted, pen and square, bar and point, things like that. Trivia nights, the local history, or excuse me, a night at the museum, history at the museum, I would like to get the museum open a couple more hours to get some people in there. I've met with both of the libraries in DePaul and Clayton, Xavier River, Till Antique Boat Museum, to really try to get some kids' programs going, and just involve the community a little bit more.
How many more hours do you think you would like?
Honestly, I would take as any that I could get, half day, a full day, something.
Because right now, you're about six hours.
Six, yes, ten to four, one day a week. And I do have a laptop, so I have been bringing that home and doing work at home to just my own sanity.
Keep up with it, yeah.
To keep up with everything.
Because I understand you get quite a few emails asking about family history, Gmail and things.
And I feel bad, you know, if it takes too long to get back to them, because I still need to do that research, then get back, and depending on when it comes, we can't have people, you know, two weeks, three weeks without an answer, so that's the hard part.
Does the board have any questions or comments about that? Questions for Jordan? So if we add another six hours to her schedule, another half day?
Do we budget that?
No, yeah, we can, we can go back, or we use the budget.
I'm not prepared to make that decision now, I think we need more discussion about it, so. But that's what everybody chooses to do, that's fine.
Well, I'm certainly not opposed to the discussion, I just, I don't know what the discussion would be about.
Well, I don't know, the, the job was the job when the job started, and Jordan accepted the job, and now we're in the job for two months, three months?
Two months.
And now the job is changing. You think the job should change, so I'm not sure, you know.
Well, to, to the defense of the historian, with speaking with Tom Leclair, when this position was coming open, he made it very clear that he did a lot of work on his own. He said, he said that the half day at the, in the office is not enough, but I just went ahead and did things at home, this, that, and the other thing. So that's why she needs more time. He was just doing it. You know, he did a tremendous amount at home, without being paid, without anything, he just did it, so.
I guess, yeah, I guess one of the things, you know, I appreciate that, I think it's a great, I love, you know, the more programming, but on the other hand, you know, you have, you know, the zoning board, you know, the planning board, their volunteers, pseudo-volunteer. I mean, it's like that, what is an employee versus what is, you know, what we all of us do, you know, I mean, in that, that's where it gets a little confusing, because, yeah, the job was posted for a certain amount of money, and I kind of agree with Bob on that, that, you know, the job was the job, the money was the money, and, I mean, is there, yeah, so that's, we're two months in, and is there, so with the town, we have money from the town that goes to the youth program, is there a possibility to tap into some of that money? Can they?
No, that doesn't, there's, like I sent you that information a couple of months ago, they're two completely different projects or programs.
Right, but they're both youth-related, and, I mean?
Well, no, this is not youth-related. She's been doing a lot for the, she would like to get the youth involved with schools, but this is not youth-related.
So are we speaking for the town as well?
No, we are not speaking for the town, but we are the lead agency.
So we share her expenses, because at a town meeting, it was discussed that they're sharing the expense with us.
Yes.
So if we raise her rate, does the town share in that?
Yes, they would, sure. I know, I'm just saying, well, we haven't, we haven't discussed that.
Probably ought to discuss it with the town before we make a decision.
Yeah.
I mean, we're not paying you by the hour, this is, this is a stipend, so I don't know why we're asked, you know, if you want to add more hours, that's great, but we're not paying you by the hours, but if the stipend that we're paying for this position is too low, then that's a different story.
Okay.
So, but I?
Well, it's definitely too low, it's not even minimum wage, it comes out to be about?
But we're not paying minimum wage, we're paying a stipend, so, I mean?
All right. Then we'll discuss it further, and you just stick with your six hours.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, we'll get back to you. Thank you, thank you. Mr. Cantwell? You're up next, please.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you. For a few moments this evening, I'm here representing the Thousand Islands Charity Poker Run. First of all, I want to thank the village for their partnership in the last, this will be our eighth annual, or sixth annual, trying to figure out the numbers here, it's our sixth time we've done this over eight years because of COVID. I don't know if I'd put that together, but we've done it six times in eight years. On Thursday evening, we have what we call a street party, and we display anywhere from 15 to 20 boats, depending on the size, and we can fit in down there. Currently, we are between Ryman's and, I guess you would say?
You go from James to John.
James to John, James to John. So we're in the wider area there with the center meeting. It's worked very well, the chief's kept us open, we just have to keep an emergency lane open. We are from five to eight on Thursday evening, we wait till businesses sort of get done, but hopefully a lot of them stay open. I've also talked to a few businesses that aren't necessarily service, restaurant, bar type of businesses that are down in that area. What we're asking for this year would be to extend down to the Opera House. One being that the Opera House is not having a function this year, which they typically do, and if they do next year, we won't ask, but we're asking this year if we can, because they're not. Chief was nervous at first, I talked to him a little bit, because there's a lot of logistics on the safety issues. He was worried about the egress for fire and emergency. We would only do one row, one lane of boats, and it would be on the north side of the additional area, right, so down in front of the school, Ryman's, DePrenzi's, we're on the north side, leaving the south side lane wide open, and it wouldn't crowd the businesses again, it would be on the riverside, allowing us to add four or five, maybe more boats down. We'd only go to John, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense to me to plug up the whole corner and go around up Webb Street, so you'd still be able to get down Webb Street and then back up John. We would stop at the Opera House, we wouldn't block John Street. So that's, that's our ask for this year, if you would consider. Chief said, sort of maybe it sounds like a good idea, you guys have always done things correctly, and, but, you know, come here first and then come back to him with what your, you know, what your thoughts were. If you were no, then there's no sense in Bobby and Chief talking about it anymore, so, yeah, that would be our ask. And again, I'm very thankful for everything that the village has done for us, allowing us to use the ramps, I know we pay the fee and stuff, and we kind of plug the community up for a weekend, but I think it's a pretty good shot at adrenaline, shot at economy, right, for that weekend. And yes, it's in July, and I wish I could do it in October or February, right, to push the bookends out farther, but we're on the big poker run schedule, and that was a weekend that was open around the other big poker runs throughout the country. First part of the ask is that. Second part of the ask would be if you would consider, we have a lot of boats, we cap it at 110. Coast Guard, Park Police allow us, I think of us, we're got it for a minute, we're at 110 boats. The docks down at the Temple, the municipal, Clayton Municipal Harbor holds roughly about 80 to 90 boats, they allow us to double up, only that weekend, we take the whole marina, so it's like-minded people do like-minded things, so there hasn't been any problems. So our ask would be, if you would consider, two, three, or maybe four spots on the inside of your dock in front of DePrenzi's, so the floater, not the attenuator, but the new, right? So the inside of the dock. If we did three spots, we could raft, and if it was allowed, we would only raft two boats, plenty of room inside, the basin is plenty big. I'm not sure we'd even do that because of the wave action, and I may not, because of wave action, even come back next year and ask, but it would be a trial, you know, one year, just to see how it works. That would allow us to add six more boats, and we do use the Antique Boat Museum as well. We leave Mary Street alone for transient boaters come in, although a lot of people that are here to see the poker run use your Mary Street dock, and that fills up quite rapidly. So first ask, to be able to extend on Riverside Drive. Second ask would be to have the ability to possibly utilize same spots, so two or three would be ideal, three would be the most ideal, and allowing us to put six boats potentially down there. I personally think it would be good for two reasons, yes, it would help the poker run put six more boats, but it would also bring a couple more of the go-fast boats up to the middle of town versus everything down to the hotel, and that sucking effect that everybody was worried about when the hotel got here, and everything's down there, trying to get some more things up this way, so, two reasons, yes, selfishly beneficial of the poker run, two, I think it would be good to have a little bit of the show into the middle of town, so, and that would be probably Thursday, but definitely Friday and Saturday night. And if we didn't need it Thursday, we wouldn't, you know, we'd only use, we would know what we need each night, so if we did need Thursday, it'd be one boat, but Friday and Saturday could be the three boats, with three boats wrapped, and so a total of six, that would be our ask.
And the block party's Thursday, right?
Thursday, correct.
And then, I think you meant Merrick, right, not John, because Merrick's the corner where the Opera House is.
Yes.
Yeah.
Merrick, is that Merrick? Yes, Merrick, right, correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yes. Chief, two years ago, or three years ago when we did the block party for the first time, he was very impressed with, all he wanted to see was dust money when we left at eight o'clock. I think it was 8:03, and I don't think there was a paper cup for dust money, so he was very impressed.
Cleaned up very nicely.
So, yeah, we definitely pay attention and know why we're here and what we're doing, and that we're allowed to do it on a yearly basis, and if we don't do it right, then we won't be back. I won't do it, only do it right, or I won't do it, so, in our community, so.
I think you guys bring out a lot of business to the village, I think you have, over the years, done exactly, said what you're going to do, and you did exactly what you said you were going to do, so I don't really have a problem with any, but I think more the barrier is great, you do great work.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
It's a benefit for something, right?
Yes, oh, yeah, so Make-A-Wish is our benefactor, our primary benefactor. Last year, we gave a check to them for $252,000.
Yeah.
River Hospital is over 20, River's been involved since day one, so we do Make-A-Wish, River, and then I call, we sprinkle a little bit of the pixie dust. We, so tiers, and the fire departments from Kate Vincent to Moorestown.
Oh, great.
Wells Island, Alice Bay, where he gets a $1,500 checks, tiers gets five, and, well, we've been doing $2,500 to tiers, and we've been doing 1,500 to the fire department. We increased it to $2,500 to Clayton Fire, and tiers to five grand, so maybe in an exchange, possibly, I would continue that increased amount to tiers and to the fire department in exchange for your?
We would accept that.
Give it a shot, give it a shot this year, and if it doesn't work, it doesn't work, right? If it doesn't work for the village, or if it doesn't work for the poker run, we won't do it, yeah. But the street party would only go, we don't want to interfere the Opera House, so if they do have a, they put a, something back on Thursday night, honestly, God bless them, I don't know why they would want to do something on Thursday night, because there's so much stuff going on, parking, right? Did I say parking? Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion.
Yeah, no, make a motion.
Thank you, I was going to dial your table and let me out, but I appreciate that. Appreciate that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You're good to go, Mr. Cantwell, thank you.
Thank you.
Remember us with bed tacks.
Yeah, that's right.
I'm better than conversation.
We know you did, thank you very much for that.
Verbage, it's all about the verbiage.
Yes, yes, it is, yes.
Am I released?
Yes, you are released.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions in regard to the police report?
No.
And as Terry was not here tonight, do you have any questions in regard to his report?
He just wanted to add the mining.
Yeah. It's a training they have to take.
They have to take annually, but he just wanted to remind.
Make sure that, yeah, that would be done. Do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? If not, could I have a motion for items one through five?
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any questions on the capital project?
I'll make a motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Any opposed? So we have to do a short form seeker for the local law that we did earlier in the meeting.
You all received a copy of that, right?
Yep.
It's basically the same every year, and Nancy just has to, you do have to make a motion to approve it, and then Nancy just signs it tomorrow, and I keep it with the local law if we do end up sending it.
So could we have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion for a negative declaration.
Thank you.
I'll second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have a resolution for the tax override. And would someone like, would someone like to offer that up, please?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have to do a roll call.
Nancy Hyde Mayor?
Yes.
Robert McDowell, Deputy Mayor?
Yes. Yes.
Amanda, do you want to talk about the refunding bond resolution?
So this resolution is, it's basically allowing USC, allowing us to refund the bond that we have right now with the USDA, which is $5.72 million. This will allow us to refinance the USC, we've kind of been humming them a bunch, and this is the last piece we need, so, this just goes on, and this will allow us to refinance at zero percent interest for the remainder of that term.
So zero percent versus five percent? Okay, I'll make that motion if you need a motion.
It's 1.6.
1.6, but it's still the better.
Yeah, that's that short-term water quality.
Yeah, right.
Short-term water quality. I'll second it.
He, Kenny, and then, and then, did we do a roll call vote, Dennis?
Yes.
Yeah. Mayor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor?
Yes.
trustee Kenny?
Yes.
trustee Dufour?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. And now the, I think, from what I read here, the BOCES is now we have to do a contract with BOCES for the?
We did.
Drug and alcohol?
Yeah.
We, or, yes.
It started two years ago.
Do they do that here, or the guys go there?
They go there.
Yeah.
So could I have a motion to approve that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Joanne?
So water and sewer, water and sewer re-levees are only $20,491.86.
Very good. Joanne spent a lot of time, a month and a half, two months ago, calling people to get them to pay the water, because many people were saying, oh, just put it on my taxes, but we want the money to keep coming in, not wait till the end of the year. It's worked out well, thank you for all your help.
I need a motion just to approve that.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Let's see, we had a workshop last week in regard to sidewalks, and afterwards, the next day, we had some further discussion, we talked about putting together an RFP, but we then decided to put an ad in the paper, in TI Sun, for, that way, all the contractors would see it and have them call Terry and give their prices. So that will be out in Wednesday's TI Sun, we'll move forward on that. And Neighbors of Watertown, we put it onto our webpage, and I think onto Facebook, they have a program for residents, if you made a certain qualification, they will help you with your house, windows, roofs, et cetera, et cetera. So that was put onto our website and onto Facebook. It's a good program, the website's very good. The website's very good.
Yeah, I looked at it and see.
Yeah, it's a very good website, yes. Right, exactly, yes, yes. I would like to thank Trustee Kenny for all of his work on the Climate Smart, that has all been submitted, we will hear in June as to whether or not we've been, become a certified Climate Smart community, which I feel we will because of all the hard work you put in, and thank you for that. There is a Climate Smart meeting on Wednesday, if anyone would like to join the committee. Pro Housing, thank you, Mr. Trustee Dufer, for all of your work, that has been submitted, and we'll be waiting to hear back from them. So thank you for all of that. I went to Todd Hill Conference two weeks ago, it was very good, it was very well-attended. I took classes on zoning and code enforcement, and just a lot of good information that comes out of it. So that was very good. Trustee Kenny, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, I'd just like to thank Amanda too for all of her help, who's putting it together as well.
Amanda Carly from.
Yeah, Carly from NCA too, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, yeah, it's exciting, it just gives us more, you know, sort of, extra points for potential grants and things like that. And anyone out there, if you haven't checked it out, we have a great little part of the website where you, 101 ways you can be climate smarter on the house, click on it, a lot of good, easy stuff that doesn't cost you anything. Thank you.
Trustee McDonald?
I don't have to be mad.
Trustee Dufer?
Hi, Dave did do a report, so I just wanted to.
Well, he'll do it next week, next month.
Right, we have a ZBA coming up that has three applications for variance on the 21st, two for digital signs that are not permitted under the village code, and one garage application with a lot of the question size, and I'll be interested and see how the outcomes are there.
And we sent that letter in about the digital sign.
Yes, and will, will you be going to that meeting, Ron? All right, very good. You'll be there to answer any of the questions, which is great. Thank you. Anything else, anything from the public? Yes?
I'd just like to mention after that last ice storm we had and so forth, what a great job Terry and his crew did picking up the stuff very quickly and, you know, cleaning up where they put the, pick up branches, stuff raking up and so forth. Excellent job.
Thank you.
I also would like to mention the sidewalks, the one in 608, 610 Merrick Street, okay, there's about a four-inch dip, okay, great straight across, so when you go there, you know, it's not very well lit. It's a wonder somebody hasn't, you know, had an accident, and, you know, suit, filter, whatever. That one shouldn't be fixed definitely soon as possible.
Well, we've, we've created numerous lists, we've had numerous people want us to do their sidewalks.
But that one's terrible.
But that's a big one, yeah.
You should see that.
But we will, we will work on that, yes.
Also, I don't know if you have any control over anything, but the Thousand Island Inn down there, the side there, that structure that's collapsed over, isn't that a hazard to, you know, people?
I believe it's on their property, you mean the sign, it's on their property.
Okay, that's what I thought, so you wouldn't get anything by them.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
But thank you.